... Thank you everyone for their attendance and if the minutes can reflect the role of various trustees, either on present or on official and also all other department staff and any of the significant attendees. Let's move forward. I entertain a motion for the approval of the eleven to village board meeting minutes and to file the nine twenty-one finance committee, the nine twenty-two finance commission, and the ten twelve board of public works meeting minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion, welcome.
A second.
Motion, a second. As always, comments, questions, certifications on the minutes. Hearing on all favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Move on to item four. Person wishing to be heard, we have a presentation from the Rose Farms Division post, Sandra Chris Winski. Would you like to come? I'll meet you right over there. Actually, you can go up to view. I think there's our RE here. There he is. Okay, why don't you guys both walk here under the light so we can...
Right over here, okay. Good evening. My name is Sandra Chris Winski. I'm with Rose Farms Post three five five. I serve as a second vice and also as a senior. We're doing shows for recognizing face, fire, and EMT for the year. And I am here today because Patrick Rock, he won this award at the post level. And from there, he also won at the county level. So this is a plaque recognizing that achievement and your service to not only this post and this community, but to our county as a whole. So thank you on behalf of the American nation.
Thank you very much.
Well done, well deserved. Anything you wish to add? Sure.
I failed to recognize, we had another one of our awardees that did go to the county level and win. And that was under Chief Bryce for the fire EMT of the year, Dan Frank. So I don't have that award. It was presented to the fire department, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. So we should be very proud as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief French, you want to give a some update?
With here at the end, I just want to bring the village board up to speed a little bit on kind of the circumstances surrounding our EMS system right now in the county. Call volume has gone up a lot, largely related to COVID obviously, but it has seemed in the last week to get extremely challenging. Today was probably at over the period of about, I don't know, maybe twenty minute range. We had about nine different patient requests in the county. We only have nine communities and most of those requests were right in the central part of the county. So it really stressed the system out pretty badly. There are a couple of communities that either have no EMS right now or are extremely stressed and were not able to provide it today. So the chiefs are needing to discuss this problem, try to come up with some solutions to hopefully get us through to the next few weeks. And I'll be in contact with you more with any emergency changes we need to make. We're trying to be creative and look to areas of the county that have strengths and try to identify where the weaknesses are and come up with a plan how to address those in the upcoming weeks. But it's been extremely challenging.
Thank you, chief. Keep up the great work. Anybody else on a non-adjournable? All right, let's move forward. Okay, cotton, just get your name.
Sure. Should I stay here? If you can hear me, that's great. I just appreciate your time and wanted to make a simple request and I'll keep it short in respect to your time, but that is to have the residences of the Scannels, Borns, Bulls on Lilo Court and the removal of snow from said area put on the December agenda. Some of you are up to date via emails and some are not, but in short order, we feel like it was injustice from day one. We did get the original product notice. We followed up with the village. This was two thousand and three, Jim. And we were told we would not be impacted. Very late, very late as in bulldozers on the street, we got a letter saying we might be assessed. And even after the village had told us we were not going to be assessed. Our belief is that came from Mr. Murphy. He was a new employee and he talked briefly to my lawyer and because we were not happy about that late notice. And at the board meeting, I don't know if you remember, Jim, my memory is no good in seventeen years, so. But the offer was no lawyers, no assessments if you maintain the property. We're concerned that that eleventh hour notification of a possible assessment and us not having any input is perhaps a problem. We believe it is. We think the process was handicapped and as a result, disagreement we felt coerced into. And we have a whole list of reasons which some of you know and some of you aren't that I think make us different than any other people applied for the ordinance involved. And the only last one I'll just make is when Mr. Scannell asked at the public works meeting about basically the walking past by Mr. Scannell's house and who's supposed to do those. Department of Public Works. They are not done, but it seems like they would be done for the dogs sooner than ours would be done. We just can't get equipment to our location and we can approve that. But so we're asking for everybody's, we don't want to just do this in a vacuum. We want everybody's opinion and we'll listen respectfully to that. Thank you so much and we'll look forward to your input and thanks for your time today.
Okay, thank you much. Anybody else on a non-adjournable? All right, let's move on to items five. Any information of the specific fashion? Move on to item six, resolutions, ordinance, action items. Item A, this is a resolution adopting the 2021 annual budget and establishing the 2020 tax levy. For numerous meetings, final...
Certainly. A quick overview is that staff is very pleased to present the 2021 budget. Sets forth just over eight million dollars in tax levy, which is the max allowable by state law, responsible village tax rate, meeting and/or complying with various versus state programs and regulations. With that, overall reduction in expenditures is programmed in the budget, which comes in lower than the consumer price index. In essence, the cost of doing business is going up, yet our expenditures are down, being responsible stewards of the taxpayer dollar. That said, all services are maintained throughout all departments. And there was a set of update sheets provided following the last meeting. These were printed on yellow. The synopsis there would be that thirty-five thousand dollars of tax levy was reallocated from the capital equipment fund into thirty thousand of which into the fire department special revenue fund and then five thousand of which into the park and open space special revenue fund. I do want to publicly thank and recognize not only staff who help manage the financial resources on a day-to-day basis, but also and more specifically, our director of administrative services, Paul Stodhar, as well as the administrative assistant on our office, Andrea Sorak, for their assistance in crafting and compiling the budget document. With that, the resolution is before the board this evening.
All right, thank you. I just want to, you know, just for the minutes, we did say that we would address funding issues for potential changes in the fire department budget and we have moved thirty thousand dollars into that special revenue fund to offset any future actions that will be taken up by the village board in finance. That being said, let's get it on the table. That's our resolution. Takes an offer motion, a second.
I'll offer.
Need a motion and a second.
To get it on the table, I'll do a motion.
A second. So offer motion, a second. So final comments?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to say something. So again, I think the board knows and I am willing to know for all the reasons that I've said in the past. I feel like it could, you know, had a better process along the way. I wish we, public safety wouldn't have felt like, you know, our, it didn't matter. And so for that reason, I know and I think that part of the three-point plan was presented at public safety and that was something that we wanted considered in the village 2021 budget. And the third point, for that reason, I'm...
All right, so allocations, please, was a, address that issue.
Yeah, that's true. You talked about that, but I also talked about that. It's not necessarily...
Well, that's really not a budget question, though. That's a, that's a personnel question for finance and the village board.
So either way, consider.
All right, other comments?
Yes. I'll also be voting no, primarily backing up what trustee Harvick has to say. I'm concerned that the wage adjustment at the fire department will not be met. I understand what you're saying as far as it's going to be handled in finance. I think that's gone on for several years now and nothing's happened. You're, you're doing a study, a complete study of all the employees and I got a feeling some of that money is going to be divvied up in other areas. Consequently, the fire department wage assessment should be affected.
The budget is allocated thirty thousand dollars to the special revenue fund that is the fire department.
But not.
Whatever the village, financial village board decides to do with it.
Yep.
But the commitment was to make sure that funds are allocated for any particular, any use in the special revenue fund department.
I'm voting no also for reason. Bryce, he was supposed to, to get this before the finance committee as well as public safety. He had a three-point plan laid out and the both of you had mentioned that it'll be a top priority. It seems to have completely overlooked two of the three items. We're handled, one halfway, one full, and the third one not at all, so I'm voting no.
Other questions?
Mr. President, I'm very new to this all, but I'm not feeling it's sitting well with me either. I've talked to people in the community that who really want to see all three points being awarded.
That's fine. I guess my question is, you should not be attaching personnel issues to a budget. I mean, the allocation will, this is, has been included and it is there. And the commitment is to, village board, the findings of the salary survey. It has to be a comprehensive study.
So this started out talking about the budget for 2021. The public safety, the only three items that Chief Bryce brought to administration was his three-point plan. The ones that were honored until the part-time people got extra wages and the but for overtime paramedics. This was the one, all those items are, you know, talking about wages. And it's not as if it can't be done. It's been done in other... It was kind of ignored along the way over months. And we were told, we're talking about it at committee in the whole. We'll talk about it at finance. We'll keep putting it off and talking about it. And so I would feel better if I didn't feel like I was misled. So I feel like the amount of money for that third point is something that we can find in the budget and we could find it in the budget today. And it's in the budget. If we need to take it out of the special revenue fund for the fire department, then that's where it's going to come from. And it sounds like now this is all being rolled over into a complete village restudy of people's wages. When all along, this was the one person who had come before and spoken about his wages. But now we're looking at everybody's wages.
Right. I think you have to, if you're going to do, if you're going to look at it individually, you have to look at all the full-time staff.
But at the time, we weren't talking about all the full-time staff. We were talking about one person. One person in one department who works 24/7 for multiple communities. That's, that's how that happened.
I think there's plenty of support for, you know, the fire department and the fire chief. I think that was the whole point of making sure we had funds allocated for, you know, for the fire department. I don't, I don't know how anybody feels, but I don't think we would have made a point of putting the funds in the special revenue fire department if we didn't feel that the support was there to do this.
So when I asked if those funds going into the budget under special revenue for the fire department were going to be used for wages, I did not get a yes.
Right, because that, that has to go before the whole board. That has to go before finance and the board. I mean, I, that's, that takes, that takes deliberation by the committees and the board. I'm not saying, it may very well happen. I'm just saying that you, I can't speak or nobody can speak for the board in itself because on any one given day, we don't know what that particular mood is. Even though all of the support is there, you can't, we can't make that commitment. It has to go through, it has to go through committee and for village board.
And we tried to stick along the right routes, you know, at, at public safety. We tried to take this one thing the way we were supposed to. So now it's rolled into something bigger. It's rolled into evaluation of all village jobs. That's, that's not, you know, what we had planned at public safety. This was, I guess if I would have known or maybe the committee would have known that, that we were going to be told no, maybe we would have looked at other items for public safety. I don't know. I haven't talked to Chief Bryce. Maybe we should have asked for another full-time paramedic. I don't know. But this is what was requested and so this is what we followed up on.
And the mechanism has been put in place to make that happen if the board still wishes that to happen. I mean, that's the point of the budget. The budget is to make the, you know, put the funds in for what we believe to be the individual program cost for the upcoming year. We believe this is an issue that is important to the board. So when, as part of the budget, we made sure that funding was allocated to the special revenue fund, assuming that this item will be addressed. I just can't, I just, I can't sit here and say this is going to go here or go there because then I'm speaking for seven people.
Yes, if I, if I may, another way to state this is the budget document, the budget book does not look to take individual personnel action. What the budget book does is make sure there's resources in place should a individual personnel action be taken. And that we have done by moving those funds, that tax levy allocation from the capital fund into the fire department special revenue as well as the park and open space. By moving that, those dollars into the special revenue, the fire department special revenue fund, there are now financial resources in the fire department special revenue fund that at such time we go through and discuss a personnel action at, at finance and by village board. And that personnel action is approved, those resources are there, we go. It's not a matter of moving numbers in the budget after the fact. It is actually, they are allocated, they're here. It is following the mechanism of coming through finance to village board to enact the personnel action. In this particular case, a wage adjustment for the fire chief. That said, again, the resources are now here in the fire department special revenue fund because of that tax levy reallocation from the capital equipment into the special revenue. So another way to say, the, make the point of what the village president was...
I mean, the support is clearly there. The point of the budget is to make sure the funds are there. That's, that's, that's the whole point of the budget. I mean, I mean, clearly the board has, you know, has expressed a strong opinion and I, and I completely sympathize with that and that's why we put the funds in there. I mean, assuming that it gets passed, but if it doesn't get passed, then, you know, then I don't, I'm really not really sure what we would do. I mean, we're coming up in, this is the last November, we're coming up into September. I don't know how long we can get tax.
The tax levy at least, we can move forward with that though. But Jim and Jesse are correct in their taking all the budgets prepared and what this existing budget offers.
So yes, the, the financial resources are there and available in the fire department special revenue fund to be utilized in a way that finance committee and village board see fit. So if that part of that approval process does note a personnel action, the resource, the financial resources are there and programmed. So this is a good budget. I strongly believe it meets the needs of what we could under the guidelines that we had to work and the restrictions we had to work to craft this document. We're there. We could not get all the way home with regards to the paid-on call, call rates. We couldn't get there under the restrictions we're working under. That said, with that reallocation of those capital funds into the special revenue funds, we can get there regarding the, the chief's personnel action that was previously discussed. We can get there now. Now it's a matter of following the village process to actually enact that wage change. The budget does not enact a wage change. The budget is allocating resources. Coming through finance committee and the village board would enact that personnel action, which again is funded under this latest iteration of the budget.
I, I am satisfied with the process and I'm also satisfied with the support that I've already heard for Chief Bryce and that this in all likelihood is going to get done in a timely fashion. We have, we have a budget before us that provides, as Jesse has said, for, for the financial resources and support to get... So my question maybe is to you, Lisa, the levy is not going to change regardless of we vote this budget out or not. What would you have us do in order to make it more acceptable?
So again, what, what public safety had asked about was the three-point plan. Those were the three things we wanted. And for, for months, the third point, which was the wage adjustment, was not even really addressed. So it's great that we're addressing it now and people are talking about it now and it seems like they're in agreement. But if we're looking, how we're looking at doing village-wide wage adjustments with, I don't know where the rest of those funds are coming from for everybody else. And you were, you know, saying goodness, thirty thousand dollars got put into the fire department special revenue fund. I don't know if that money is going to be used for that. You don't know. There might be other things they need. So to, to me, what's disturbing about the process was how it happened. And, and you know what? If, if we were told that, if that's what we were told before, I guess I could honor that then. But it's only in the last two meetings that we're going to do instead.
Right, because that's news based on the police chief's suggestion and doing the research of looking at the lease program. So that's really, really made this whole possible. And that really was in the last month or so.
That has already been made by the board. And for you to suggest that you don't know where those funds are going to go, well, you and a number of other people on the board are in agreement with that commitment. I think we can assume safely that those funds will go where we want them to go and problem solved.
I'm not going to assume anything.
So just to clarify, if we approve this tonight, finance in the beginning of December can request that, that nine thousand seven hundred come out?
No, it, it, what happens is the funds become available for fiscal 2021. It comes to check. Because it's not a wage adjustment survey. It's a little bit different. The expectation is at that point, fire survey will be done. It will be brought to, get the result. There's a strong commitment from one, two, three, from the majority of the board to support this action. I do not, I do not see this not happening.
President Brunkwill? President Brunkwill, you know, I have to tell you...
One, one second.
I mean, the, the thing that kind of turned the discussion was the ability for us to pull money out of capital and put it into the fire department to fund the request. So that's what this does. So we had a commitment to, to the chief and the fire department that says, we will find out, we will find a way to make a mechanism in place so that finance and the village board can make those decisions and have the money available to do it. And that's what this budget does. It makes the money available.
Thank you very much, President Brunkwill. I think one of the things I, I can say here is I don't think that there's anybody here more deserving of a change in salary than Chief Rice. I think he's done a great job and I've said that all along. I think that the thing is, is that we have here in front of us a budget. And a budget is a tool which helps us best guesstimate what's going to take place during the year and we match funds with it, knowing full well that we can cheat, change that process if we need to and reallocate funds. I have no doubt in the information that I've received from both you and from our administrator, Mr. Tice, that this process for, for Chief Rice is going to be executed. I think it's going to be executed in a way that takes into the considerations not just how deserving the chief is, but how his job has changed since he's taken this position. I cannot see, I cannot vote no on this to hold this up for one individual in, in our employ when I represent the village at large. So from my perspective, I'm voting yes on this budget. I fully understand where we need to go with Chief Rice. I fully think it's going to take place. But I, I think for the benefit of our village, we have to get a budget passed. Thank you.
Other comments? Again, Chief, I think you have pretty much, you have the full, much of full support for, not only for the work that you do, but also in the actions that we've taken as far as allocating the funds to make good on the requests or things like that. So I really feel that this is, you know, we're heading down the path and then it'll get resolved. Yes, sir.
How long before we would start?
The, Dave was committed to be in front of finance in January. And it doesn't, no, I just want to go down and say, and it doesn't matter when, it doesn't matter, you know, how long it's... It's supposed to be retro, right? You can always make it effective January one. So, you know, even if it takes us into February or whatever, we can always say this was effective January first and we can make it anything retroactive that we want.
That was the point I was going to raise. Thank you.
It's not like, it doesn't, whatever the process is, it does not impact the effective date. Other questions? All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Resolution, I'm opposed.
Yes, I'm opposed.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hands. Aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands. Resolution passes four to three. Thank you very much. Again, now have our work cut out for us in the next step. All right, let's move on to item two. Item two, the resolution accepting the dedicated sensitivity sewer, water main, storm sewer, curb and gutter, and sidewalk of the final platform of boost and subdivision, phases one and two, building graphing of the Congress Godson.
I'll offer. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Off the motion, second. Comments, questions on that? Hearing now, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That resolution passes. Item three is the ordinance.
Hold on, um, did we cut, did we cut Shady Hollow, item one, Blue Stem was item two for infrastructure acceptance?
Oh, okay, absolutely. Um, so let's go back to item, uh, two.
I'm sorry, actually I think you skipped and took Blue Stem first.
Okay, so item one is the resolution accepting the dedicated sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, curb and gutter and sidewalk of the final, Shady Hollow, phase three, subdivision, village graphing, Zaki County.
I'll offer. Motion?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes three. Here's, um, motion to approve ordinance for two and recreating section eleven dot three two zero five zero three, three species to be planted, to be planted.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Comments on that? Hearing now, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, item three is the motion to recommend the village board approve the police department fleet lease program with the enterprise fleet management of St. Louis, Missouri be approved.
I'll make a motion, please.
I'll second.
You good, Mike?
Yes, we, we, uh, I believe we're, we're asking for a slight change to the contract on, on an indemnity provision. The village will indemnify, but, but only for any accidents, but only to the level of state law and to the, to our level, uh, state law, which are currently fifty thousand dollars. Enterprise has agreed to those terms, so we would ask that the motion and the second reflect the change to the indemnity language.
Motion, second, okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
So, um, I don't know if everybody came to finance when this was discussed and I noticed that the additional information from finance wasn't included on this. Jesse, um, you know, the, the paperwork you had, the additional spreadsheet? Was that? Was that something that everybody?
I
Wanted to see?
Believe the entire board gets the finance packet. Uh, quite frankly, I'm drawing a blank on our packet process right now.
Yeah, I just didn't see it. I also didn't see it on, a copy of the minutes on the back.
We did not get the copy.
Uh, I mean, just for the future?
Sure, um, yes. I do have the, uh, draft copies as the back of my packet. Um, that said, they should have been at, at the tail end of your packets as well regarding the draft meeting minutes from, uh, November second, uh, for the finance committee. Whi- which speaks to the fleet lease program discussion. Um, if that was missed, I apologize for the oversight in our packet process, um, should have been included with, uh, draft minutes from past recent, uh, committee meetings, um, are always, are to be included with the packet and, um, apologize for that oversight if they were not included.
The draft minutes were included with the packets, with everyone's table packets. The draft minutes are not included on the website. I don't see on the back of mine, you know? I mean, which is fine. Yeah, I, I know lots of finance, but it's not included on the minutes on the back of the packet.
I see them there.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I was asking about this table.
Right, the, the question was about the minutes and the table and the minutes are there, however, the table was not.
Yeah, that's all it is.
Uh, any, any questions on the lease program?
Another question. So it's my understanding that the older vehicle in the past would go to village employees that public works utilize? If we are going to, uh, lease program, what would happen with vehicles for public works?
Uh, my understanding is the village does have the opportunity to keep the vehicle at the end of the lease. Should we maintain a rotation with other departments? Um, otherwise we can look at different arrangements with other departments as purchasing their own, buying out one of our leased, um, items or leasing their own. Um, we will have to, we are just inching into this program where this would be the first set of police vehicles um, that would in essence be hand-me-downs in the future. Um, so that is our next step as staff to start working through what are the options for the other departments? Is it leasing the entire fleet, a small vehicle fleet? Is it, do we keep some on hand after the completion of use by the police department to rotate into other departments? What financially makes sense for all departments? Um, but, uh, so yes, that is the next step of our, um, discussions internally. But to start moving forward with the program, uh, we're, we're in good shape.
It'll take at least four years to turn over the fleet to an all, all lease fleet, so there's time to, if Jessica can review and discuss with the department to see what the best options going forward.
I, I believe trustee Lord has a question or comment.
Yeah, God, just a quick question here. Uh, did we, we did address the issue that maintenance and, uh, it's not going to be covered under this lease, I believe. Does that affect at all any part of our budget that was proposed or not proposed? Uh, cause I think when we went into this, we kind of thought that maintenance or some of the maintenance would be covered. Instead, we're paying a fee for them to oversee our maintenance and our maintenance costs.
Uh, it was six dollars a month per vehicle, talking maximum four vehicles for next year. We probably won't get the vehicles till November, so we're talking forty-eight bucks.
Yeah, less than a hundred dollars.
So with, with that small amount, trustee Lord, um, it is easily as, uh, uh, assumed by the budget, um, for that maintenance program because of the anticipated late delivery date. So we are covered there.
Okay, so my, my, my question on this is that my, my question on that was the, um, did we make any anticipation in our current budget for twenty twenty-one that would decrease the maintenance cost based on the presentation? Based on the misunderstanding that we had that enterprise was not covering maintenance cost?
I mean, I, we're already using a fund balance of what, six hundred? So I mean, we're already using a fund balance of six hundred thousand dollars to, uh, offset the, um, levy, so you know, we're, I don't know, I don't even know if, if, um, you can even put a percentage of the change, you know, the dollar value of, of what the possible maintenance we may or may not save based on how much we're already allocating towards the budget from the fund balance. So if we save a few dollars or if we have a few dollars, I mean, and a, a great, another great example is, I think we had, uh, close to half a million dollars-ish uh, with five fund balance for the twenty twenty budget and through, you know, uh, the actions of the department heads and um, the actions that we've taken as the board, I think we're going to end up pretty close to, pretty close to even. I don't know, I wouldn't say it will be, but so we're already, you know, depending on how things go throughout the year, you know, plus heads and flows, but you know, we're even for the twenty-five budget, you know, we allocated five hundred thousand, we're going to probably use so, you know, we're talking, you know, such a small, small percentage of a percentage um, in the maintenance that you, you can't, it, it's just, it's just been so insignificant.
And, and here too, if I may add in.
I under-
Sorry, trustee Lord, please.
Yeah, I, I understand. I've managed fleets before and I, I understand, I've actually worked with enterprise on a large fleet. And I guess my, my big question is what I had a problem within my company is my company went with the idea that in fact, all of our maintenance was going to be included as part of that lease cost and we ended up with a significant negative balance on our maintenance. It appears the village has thought that out, so I'm comfortable with it.
Chief, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, uh, that eight-dollar charge per month for vehicles just for them to manage the fleet's deal. Our, our maintenance budget is still covered and we, we've got enough in there to allocate for that, so yeah, we're, we're bold and it's not going to change anything.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
That just answered my question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, other questions on the lease program?
Yeah.
Uh, chief, leasing normally comes with a mileage cap. Like normally twelve thousand miles a year or something. And then if you go over that, you get dinged on the backend. Where are we at in that regard?
So with, with regard to the mileage, there is no mileage cap in our lease program because of our, we're government vehicles. Um, you will see in the lease contract a mileage, that's a mileage estimate that we give to enterprise at the beginning of each year to let them know, hey, this is what we think our vehicles will hit. Uh, and they do that for resale on the backend, so, but they do not penalize us and they will not overcharge us for any miles additional above beyond what we estimate.
But you also get a number when you get that leased vehicle on, normally what you can buy that vehicle at the end of that lease. Now you're telling me that being buried.
We know, they, they do their calculations every year based on the market and the year of the vehicle and the number of miles that's on the vehicle. So that's one of the things that, that is a benefit from enterprise is that if they see that a vehicle is at the peak of its market, they're going to recommend that we get rid of that vehicle at that time and then we can move into a new one at that time. So there's, they're, they're not penalizing us for any types of, um, overdoing, uh, watching it to make we get the best bang.
Trustee, no, there's no, there's no hard dollar amount as the chief has indicated in the lease for the buyout. It's, it's a rather complicated formula that they use to calculate the value at the end of the lease term.
Just because, like Amy said, normally these vehicles get passed down to DPW, they get passed down to Park Interact and now all of a sudden, maybe that's not going to happen unless we spend X amount of dollars to buy it up.
Yeah, so the, the way the lease works is with these vehicles is what we'll do at the end of their, at their end of their life for the time to change over to the new vehicle, what we get, the revenue that we get from those vehicles rolls into the next lease to keep our payment down low to where it's manageable. So it is being more cost-effective to the, to the village, which over the, over the five and ten-year plan that you saw when we laid it out was a savings, that estimated savings of about four hundred and ninety-one dollars or whatever, four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars over the term of that ten years.
And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're only talking about the police department fleet. We're not talking about, you know, in our current process of where we purchase and then it falls down to, you know, DPW or something like that. Um, it's not to say that we couldn't expand the lease program into different departments and things like that, but this only covers your police fleet.
And also right now too, it's a portion of the police fleet, so there would still be vehicles that the village owns that could be handed down over the course of the next four years as we move into this full lease program, if, if we do continue down this path. Um, with that, during that time, it is staff's task to check in with, uh, parks, to check in with building inspection, to check in with public works. Does it make sense for them to get that hand-me-down? Does it make sense to purchase their own? We've got thankfully, the better part of four years to figure that out. Granted, we want to figure that out sooner rather than later. But again, we are starting with a portion of the police fleet at this point.
Right, and I think that's what's important. Hand down all the cars that we this is not, not the lease vehicles.
Correct. Yes.
Other questions? All right, motion, second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Passes. Move on, item seven, department officers report, uh, chief has to go. Anybody else have anything they wish to, uh, ask of our various department heads or anything, uh, you wish, they wish to pass along? Jesse, you usually skip it off?
Sure, I, I've just a couple of quick updates. Um, one is, uh, pretty significant in that today, the state spring port, uh, started hearing arguments on the state's mask mandate. This is pretty important to our organization as we have internal policies, however, those internal policies are really driven um, primarily by the state of emergency and emergency orders for us by the governor. The current mask mandate is set to expire on November twenty-first. So we are watching this very closely from a, uh, employer's standpoint to see what, uh, impact any sort of, uh, legal decision may have uh, the mask mandate here in the state and then also as it trickles down to our operation. On a much lighter note, uh, definitely want to, um, point out that you will see village crews out and about over the course of this week, um, putting out our holiday decorations throughout the village, whether it be putting up trees, uh, getting those ready to decorate, uh, putting out the holiday banners and other holiday lighting. Um, they are taking a break from leaf collection, uh, this week to focus on that. And then they will, then the crews will be back on leaf collection, um, thereafter, um, as long as weather permits. So, um, they made a big push, uh, prior to this week to make sure they had time to put the holiday decorations out and will be back on leaf collection next week.
Comments, questions?
President, I'd just like to thank Amy and her team for the job well done with the elections. I heard a lot of good comments from the community that things ran very well and we thank you for all your work.
Well, just wanted to pass on that fourth window for cares funding ends today. By tomorrow, five o'clock, that's the end of the first of middle. Uh, their total expenses has exceeded a hundred ninety-four thousand and some change that was allocated by the state of Wisconsin. We are going to see if there's anything available that we'll, that I can fund it. If we don't, then we will turn to FEMA for reimbursement.
All right.
Um, I just wanted to, um, make a comment, Dan, or, um, on your way home, could you swing by the River Island Walk Course? There's some items on the left there, I think from some of the contractors, maybe from the lift station.
Okay.
In the road or? Uh, on the little circle, that little island, yeah, yeah, the little island, there's, uh, holes, there's, um, big huge like casings from wires and I don't know if that was from the lift station or from any, from TV companies, but it, there's a lot of it down there.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and I, I, I did want to also ask, and, um, you know, Mr. Born did speak, is, is his concern something that the village can talk about and is it something that we can get some more information about concerning the, the filing of like the, the village paths?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get into it. I talked to attorney her friend already about it, so let's go look and see if the, if he has, uh, a folder, a file on it.
Oh, oh, okay. So that will come back at some point.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Really shouldn't talk about it tonight, but it definitely should be on an agenda.
I, okay, that's all I wanted to do that about. And then the only other thing that I'll, I'll ask is I wanted to thank chief captain air for giving us your phone number. Um, it, I, I've never, that's a number I'm never going to dial. Um, but I just wanted to know that I appreciate that in case there's, you know, something that I need to talk to you about. And to, um, you know, kind of confirm that, um, obviously Jesse, if there's something that I'm worried about and it's a concern, I'm definitely going to let you know before I call him to talk to him about something that concerns me, but I don't feel that I have to let you know every single time I might need to call him.
Well, I, I guess the, the, the emphasis there was just simply that I have a heads up on any potential policy discussion items. Um, I understand there will be day-to-day questions and I fully expect and appreciate um, outreach to department heads on general day-to-day questions. If we start getting into questions about, you know, personnel or, uh, policy-type issues, that I want to at least have a heads up on. That way we can plan accordingly.
Sure you haven't had an issue in the past.
No, 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 so I just wanted to confirm that definitely I'm going to let you know if there's something
Oh, sure. Sure, absolutely, and I appreciate that.
I got a call from former director Sastrom and I'm sure current director Phelan would, would agree. Um, John said, please thank Amy and the auxiliary, I think that's what the woman's auxiliary for the legion for the new signage down at Veterans Park. Add no charge to the village.
That's nice, it was done just in time for Veterans Day. For those of you that don't know, the sign said veteran singular, veteran park, and it's actually veterans park. So the American Legion really thought it would be worthwhile for us to put that money into getting a new sign to represent all the veterans. And it was on Veterans Day, so thank you.
All right, with that being said, let's move on to licenses. We have, uh, two individuals and their places of employment are listed. Entertaining motion for approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Uh, item nine for the bills, entertaining motion for the approval of village expenditures, six hundred thousand, four hundred and sixty-five and forty-seven cents.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, and game ten, second. Comments on the bill? Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Item ten, motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you all very much.